All right, we'll go ahead and get started. And first of all, we've asked Larry to offer our prayer, and then after that, Scott will lead us in our place. We'll go to that point.
Our Father, have we been grateful to see that we have a community gathered as a community, grateful for the freedoms we enjoy that allow us to gather in this world. Praise Him as we deliberate issues that concern the state of pace in this city, and we do so wisely in the best interest of those who live in this great home. Give thanks for many blessings we enjoy and offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Ready, please, drive, please, flag, ready, please.
I allegedly can see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda would be the approval of the consent agenda for the approval of the September 2nd council minutes. Do we have any discussion or okay?
There's no discussion, I would not approve of consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion. Have a second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Next thing is public forum. If anybody would like to address the council mayor, please come up your mic and state your name.
My name's Richard Steele. I moved to this town in the summer of 1973. I'm here today because of Port Pacon. This is one of the most decent places you could possibly want to live. I want to support our history. First mayor was David Crockett, 1856. I want to support all the decent things that we've had. Now, I just got off the phone with Senator Mike Lee asking him to lift the, try to lift the federal moratorium on mining in Eureka, where I'll be working up there to Eureka, out of my gravel pit in Alberta. Pacon is a decent place. We have to clean up our reputation. I do have one request, though. I'd like there to be speeding tickets written past my house. People coming out of Elcridge, and they're just flying. Sooner or later, a kid's gonna get killed up there. I think that across that business, there needs to be a lot of speeding tickets written for say, seven and a half, 10 miles an hour over. I think that there should be a little leeway there on that. 25 is a bit slow, but man, they're coming by in work trucks at 40, 50 miles an hour right through my neighborhood. Salem, Pacon, Utah County put a string on them through a couple of weeks ago. All their drivers come through about 40 miles an hour. But I don't have any complaints against this town. I know how hard our mayor has worked. This is a decent place. I know how hard all of you are working, and you are. And I just like to, I'm here to compliment, not complain.
Richard, what street do you own?
On this mess. On the one that connects to Elcridge.
Yeah, I see you work.
And that's not a complaint. I know. I see Bart Rosen up there, and I know what the police are doing. I know. I see they are doing a wonderful job with the resources they have. They have my full support. And that's out here, folks. Have a good night.
She's got her one.
My name, excuse me, is Rod Stram. I'm here representing my boys, terrorists at school, and the rest of the work. But July 1st of this year, we, Rusty appeared before the council asking for a needed permanent easement to a property we were looking at in Pacon. And at that point, Councilman Skinner stated the council needs to grant permission of the easement, and something needs to be done, given the layout of the property. There was a motion by Councilman Phillips to grant the easement and direct the staff to explore options regarding the property's sale and trade. The motion was seconded by Councilman Hancock. The motion carried, and all members voted yes. This last week, I obtained a copy of the agreement from the city attorney, and the easement is stated as being a non-exclusive, non-permanent easement. The issue that we run into with that is that we're unable to obtain financing on that home, unless we have a permanent access to it. I don't know what point that they lost their access, the Suttons lived there since 1923. So at some point, they must have had access when they built the home. And I don't know when they lost it, but we're asking to support.
Did they, did they have the access through Sanford's?
Well, no, it's on the old highway that made the corner. That's a little bit of a place, but.
Oh, okay. In Sanford, I don't know if it's.
I thought Suttons won it.
Yeah, 1923.
Yeah, but it's.
And what is the right of the mayor's correct, and who was the predecessor? And that was just back in the 90s, I believe.
What's that?
Sanford.
Did Sanford own it?
I think it was 40 Sanford out of all that.
Yeah, they're still related, it's brother and sister.
Right, yeah, that could be.
Most of that family lived right on that.
Right. I think they just don't know whether they're in there.
Well, I guess my issue is, like, I didn't like, I mean, it doesn't have an access there, I don't think. I would like to see it beated to the ground as an access, as a right-of-way, but maybe with some wording in there that says, look, they're hip, and by chance, we needed it. Or the roundabout, that maybe the city could participate in helping move the easement to the west or something, something in that way. But I don't know if the roundabout would go that big anyway.
Mayor?
As I looked over the minutes, and I think this is what happened, I believe that the motion that was made was proper motion, and our intent was that there be an easement allowed to the Shrams to do this. The whole question came in where we, I'm missing. The whole question came in where we said that should direct staff to explore other options regarding property sale and trade. Now, I mean, really, we have the opportunity to sell it, if it came down to, we could give it to the Shrams. Rod and I have talked about even exploring the idea of trading properties. I think the whole issue on this is simply that probably in when John Lundell changed jobs, I think the issue is that that ball got dropped, as far as coming back to the council, with staff coming back to the council with a solution for this, or what they wanted to do. I think we're amenable to just about anything that can happen. But I think what happened is it got dropped at that spot. And so I think it falls back again, and we need to talk to Dave, bring it back to staff and say, talk to us, see what opportunities, see what we would want for payment, or we would be willing to trade, all of those things, come back to us.
I think the move is good. I think there was a misinterpretation.
I think the point was, it didn't get done.
Oh, I agree, Scott, I think there was a misinterpretation. When I remember that, I was.
Larry said that, too, you know, stated that the council needs to grant permission of easement, and something needs to be.
Yes, yes, agreed. But what happened was, it wasn't contingent on staff coming back, but the permanence of easement is contingent on it coming back. And the fact that the way it's written says a non-permanent, then he can't get financing.
It needs to be, can't be temporary, it's got to be permanent.
So in order to do that, we have to solve the problem of what we're doing with it.
But it needs to be, it needs to be cut to the ground, not with the. So we don't have to do this every time, if they was to sell it, and we're back there doing it again.
The only thing that stopped that is that we haven't looked at the options or chosen the option, and guessed the ground in, and Mr. Shram's hands have somebody.
We grant permanent easement, but the issue is that there's intent on the council keeping that property from the town to roundabout. Where that easement is requested on the east south, it cuts that property open half, you don't put a roundabout there without getting permission back from the property.
And that's what I said, I would hope that we would, if the roundabout was there, that they would give consideration about moving the right-of-way.
But I don't know how you do that, if you're granting permanent easement, they have it. You can't say it was permanent unless we decided to put a roundabout, and then have to work with us.
But how do you tell somebody they can't buy their house because they don't have an easement that they've used for forever, 190 years?
I agree. They need access to their property. But that, I guess that was the, there's some thought from the council that we might have a roundabout someday, and if that's the case, we've got to take care of it.
Can't we do the descriptive easement right where the driveway is, or not?
That's exactly what we have attached, is two descriptions, or two driveways, one off of Main and one off of the east south. To describe just the driveways, the way that I did it was to preserve the integrity of our property, because as you grant those, our property actually covers what looks like three adjoining properties, with this property in the center. It goes across the driveway of both adjoining properties to the Tran property. It's quite a wide arm. How, just sort of, how these exits and driveways, because it cuts.
So who else's driveway does it cut off?
The ones to the north on Main Street.
And the west. So is it Dick Sanford's in?
Yeah. And the ones to the west.
So what, what's he gonna do?
The issue has just been brought up in the last system, since 1953.
It's a very.
And I've only got one copy of this, but this is the.
So does he cover all of Dick Sanford's front of his place?
This is an attachment agreement. You see, this comes across into this other property, that's their driveway. It comes across into this property, and that is their driveway. If their driveway ends before our property.
Well, but my point is, Travis.
Have you looked at this?
Well, the hard part isn't the reason, we were given direction, we tried to find a way to use it in the future, and that's, that's the hard part. If we do something permanent, it makes it more difficult in the future. But we can do whatever you guys want.
I understand that, but I mean, when you, if you was to overlay a roundabout on top of that, is it really gonna go that far to the west, is my question.
I don't know, we don't have a roundabout standard, so I don't, it may vary, we have to design one, which we don't.
My, my understanding on that is, is we did have a plan, an idea, that we put a roundabout there, and it was turned down, flat, turned down. And my understanding was that when the data saw us, with their red rock, that stopped it.
Stopped it.
There won't be a roundabout. If you do a roundabout, you're gonna have a problem with that.
Yeah, you gotta do.
That's not going to happen.
What is, what would be the benefit? I mean, a roundabout there, I think we're supposed to have it there now. I mean, I don't see a huge benefit, but what I see is, school buses having an issue trying to get through a roundabout right there, and you've got, I mean, I don't, to me, it doesn't.
But, you know, we brought that up when Jill was here.
Grant.
I think it depends on what we're gonna do with Main Street, and whether we're gonna do a roundabout up there.
We need to.
We turn it to two ways. Yeah, we're gonna make that two-way in the future, you make that one more traffic going through there, and you may operate about there, but that's a same thing.
I don't, I don't know the way.
And you're, you're saying, Mark, that there's no way you can write into this, that we grant an easement, and in the event that something happens, we have the right to.
That's not permanent.
This, yeah, it, it's either, it's either, or, I actually wrote that language into the agreement that indicates that if the city council determines that, and I use just paraphrased language, you know, help, say, the welfare of the citizens, they determine that they need that property, then that, the two easements would be ours to be able to utilize a property to the fullest extent.
Could you get with his lending company and see what it would take to put in there to get work?
I think that has to say it's.
Yeah, you wouldn't move it.
I think we need to call it, get this resolved. You know, I don't see this straight.
Something you can do, Mark, or?
Yeah, I.
Well, he said.
Never, I didn't take it.
No.
He's cutting it off. Whole intent was to make the losses are back. Or do you think Mark can work in that way, or?
My experience is it won't just be one lender, so if we were to eventually sell the home, then they're gonna have the same issue.
They will.
They'll have to go home against it, if there's no dedicated easement to it.
They'll have the same issue.
What happens if we do put a roundabout in? What happens to the driveways? Do they have access to the land?
Then you end up buying it back from whoever owns that land, that's the problem.
Well, I'm saying is that you're gonna have to buy that land, is what you're saying?
Well, if we own it now.
The house is.
What I'm saying is you move part of it to the west. That, that's why I said, that's why I wanted to know, what big race was it, roundabout? How far could it possibly go to the west, where it would affect that, this part of the property?
Can we look at one of Provo's or whatever, get some of their dimensions, and lay that out, or?
But the key thing here is, like I said, when they allowed that off to build where they build, they did skew that, that four-corner, so there is a problem with that cross the street.
I mean, is it, I mean, I just don't see that huge effect with a roundabout there.
I, I agree 100%. I don't think where we're gonna put a roundabout there.
That's what I'm saying.
Every single intersection in the city can have a roundabout.
The only thing you probably do there is put a right-turn only lane coming south.
Yeah, I can see more lanes. I can see why you can have more lanes. But more lanes would take up less room than.
Coming from the south, coming from the north to the south.
Well, I guess what we're gonna have to do, it's not on the agenda tonight, so we can't make any decisions. So all we can do is give direction on the staff.
I think where we're at on it is.
I thought it was on the agenda, I guess.
I think where we're at on it is, when we left that night, we had an easement, and so we went ahead and bought the property, and now we have a piece of property with no access. We assume that. And it's taken two months to get to where we have the agreement, and now the agreement isn't what we discussed for a group.
Yeah, by law, we can't, if it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on anything. We can get directions, but we can't.
The motion was to grant an easement. The council doesn't feel like there's gonna be a roundabout there ever, or need that, and we just grant an easement permanently.
Well, and we just.
But I don't want to cut off her nose and mess up a right-turn lane scenario. What do you want to do? I don't know. Do the staff have a, or Public Works Director have a recommendation, or anything on this?
We could look at how, having a 12-foot lane there, and where that would go to, and see how big an easement that is.
Would there be a possibility of putting easement right on the corner of the property line instead of our current driveway yet? Because you could, you could grant a permanent easement on each side of the property, right on the edge of the property, and then it preserves most of the, most of the city property for whatever they want to do.
You'd probably do that on the north, I don't know how convenient that'd be on the west. It'd be a little bit tight.
Yeah. I'm just looking to try to confirm as much of the city property you could. If you put the right-of-way on the very edge, like on the north side.
So recommend two easements?
Even if Rod continues to use work that, but he has a permanent easement there on that, so that, you know, that nobody can take away that access. You give a permanent easement right along the edge, and then it really doesn't affect most of the property. And he can still use the.
That's what they've been doing in the past, anyway, right?
Until such time as it.
That satisfies your.
I don't hope that works for you, Rod.
And Mike, a little bit, would that satisfy? I'm not sure if I would think.
I think if you had a permanent easement, regardless of where that was, it doesn't have access.
Yeah.
The lenders wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah. The other fact, if we made a motion, if the motion was to grant an easement, let's make it a permanent easement on that side, because you need to use the, you know, the access we're using. But the existence of easement, then should free.
Let's, let's just sit down with Rod and see if we can get that.
Would that be something that can be worked out? We don't have to bring it back to council, or?
Well, we'll just see. If it can't, then I guess it'll be back in two weeks.
Let's, if we can, let's get back in two weeks.
October 7th.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else like to address the council, mayor? If there's none, we'll go ahead and close the public forum, and we're going to staff report. We staff report.
I'd love to just report a few of our programs that we've got going. We have youth flag football starting in two weeks. As you know, soccer's underway, and our fall collegiate softball and men's softball are turning, we're doing tournaments now and finishing up here in the next two weeks for those. We're also taking registrations now for youth wrestling and youth volleyball, so any public if you would like to, or take registrations there. This weekend, we have National Gymnastics Day. We'll have a gymnastics showcase Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Petitney. And then we're also supporting logistically the Wonder Woman Bike Ride, which has been here annually with a women's ride where they do a 15-mile, a 30-mile, 70-mile, or 100-mile ride, starting here. And we've been going to Pacon, pool, out, and around West Mountain and back, so. That is the 19th as well. So the start, they all leave, well, depending on their ride, they leave together. The 100-mile will be first at 6:00 in the morning, and then they'll stagger the starts after that, so they kind of all end at the same time. Of course, it's a staggered end after 100 miles also, so. So if you want to see the start, come Irving, and if you just want to see some riders, then you can go around the town, they'll ride through Upbridge and a variety of places as well. Thank you.
Carl, can I have your question?
Can you give us an update on?
Sure. On the pool situation. So we've had, we've got the test ball plugs in, and we've tested a variety of locations with those. We've isolated each pump system, there's about 13 of the pump systems there. So to the, so for example, the splash feature, the playground feature, we've isolated those drains, as well as the pump out with those test ball plugs. And so each of those, we have not found a change in the loss. We still need to, we've done the return lines within the pool, and that was what we did last spring. So we need to somehow isolate those return lines, and then the last portion there, we cameraed some of that, but I think we need to re-put a camera in again on those return lines, because after checking these plugs, we don't see any change.
We have our store department.
Yeah, we'll have to have the store department do that. We couldn't do that, of course, before. Once we open those pipes, then the water will drain quickly as well. And we didn't want to contaminate any water as well. So we're finishing up a few things. We started those, we actually started the isolation with the, with the test ball plugs on the 24th of August, and have been doing those a variety of days, as we began the shutdown, so.
Okay, I just like.
Yeah, we're.
It's on the farm.
Yeah, for sure.
Or what, we, it'd be nice to figure it out, but we hoping that.
We definitely, we hope to, and we're looking at it, and it's, we're doing that every day now, basically, Greg and I are there working on that as well, and I'm there a few days a week, but I'm troubleshooting, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other staff?
Mayor, City Council, a couple of things this week. Just a reminder, Officer Gueldorff graduates from K-9 school tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Police Academy, which is the Larry H Miller campus. If anyone would like to attend, they're more than welcome to attend those services. We had a couple of our officers certify as AR-15 armors. This week, myself being one of them, so we won't have to send our guns out to get fixed anymore, we're all certified, so we won't have to spend that money anymore, we're certified to fix our own stuff, so that'll save us a few dollars every year. The last two weeks, the police department's responded to 511 calls, made 43 arrests, 83 offenses, 90 citations, 124 violations, two DUI arrests, 125 traffic stops, and 13 traffic accidents. Do we have any questions back?
13 traffic accidents, is that, is that normal?
We usually have between 25 and 35 a month, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty close.
So those are all, that's everything, like, that's been a kind of.
That's, that's everything we've had in the last two weeks, so whether it's a hit run, or a minor, or fatal, or whatever, same thing, so. I would assume as the summer months are coming in, we'll probably jump a little bit, but the calls jumped in August to about, almost 1,500 from about 1,100 average, so August was pretty much the busiest, busiest month we had so far this year, so hopefully it slows down a little bit.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I just have one thing to report tonight, is we closed for kids during Labor Day at the park. We gave away about just over 1,500 clubs, so that was good. We still have, we still have roughly 500 left that we're just giving away at the golf course, so I thought it was, it was, it was a good advance. A lot of, a lot of people, I wish we would have put up a sign that said free. We had other signs that said sponsored by Gladstone and stuff, but as soon as people found out it was free, then they, they really liked it, but it's kind of laying down. We did, we did host Komatsu, which was a big tournament, they had 148 players there, so we were kind of busting at the seams, but a lot of new players, they didn't, hadn't seen the golf course, they really appreciated it, and Mark's done a good job. And I think the parks, or the park looks like it held up, made it through, but had a lot of water during the celebrations, apparently. So I think, anyway, I just wanted to comment on the celebration, I thought it went really well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Okay? Scott? Cam?
Mayor, I attended the UIA and Utopia meetings this week.
I thought you were kidding.
No, I wasn't kidding.
I thought you were kidding. Tell them right now, because it's not until later.
It was reported to us in those meetings. It's encouraging, really, because they're all positives. They mentioned that they have not issued any new assessments this year, and they're hoping not to, not to do that again. They, they've reached a point that they're calling a positive net earnings. Combined revenues were just short of a million dollars this, on this report, and they're expecting to be up into the million-dollar range now. They have made connections in every city in the Utopia district in the last month. One thing of interest in Tremont, and they had a citizen of their city interested, he went out to his neighbors, got 60 of his neighbors, he's committed to pay for the connection to their houses, and so they. pay for the connection to their houses and so they moved them forward in the plan and they're putting those in. And so the comment that they made that was interesting is quoting the, the board chairman. Just the fact that the city is showing intent is making a difference. Everything is looking, it's slow, but it's looking, looking every, every aspect. So that's what I agree with. Anything about McCory that they talked about?
Not a word.
So they disappeared?
And kind of same in my ground.
Yeah.
They're still in, in the case.
So are the, the big four or whatever they are, city's still dealing with McCory? Probably.
Yeah.
That's the best I could do, Mike.
Okay. Hi. Larry? Wow, this is really quick. I, in fact, all this time, I didn't pass today, and we'll just carry on. We'll turn the time back over to Cam again, because we know he likes to talk tonight. And you'll do the scout attendance for today.
Well, we're glad to welcome the scouts here with us tonight. I, I really think it's a good thing. I don't know if you guys are so bored that you don't even pay attention to what's happening. But you know, I think it's interesting that you sit down and we're talking about an intersection and what happens and what the city's going to do in the future, but I, I hope you recognize that all of these decisions are.
Why?
They, they have to be made. So we have certificates for attendance for the scouts. When I read your name, come up and receive this certificate and then and walk across from here, shake hands, follow along. Welcome in here. First we have Brian Cox. Brian? After him, Travis Christmas. Corbin Rule? Corbin? And Cameron Roel.
And we appreciate the scouts for coming in. Scouts don't get winner again. We need more scouts, so. More Mayor buddies. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a public hearing, so we have a motion to we have a motion to open a public hearing. We have a second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Paws? Okay, we're now into a public hearing and it's on the budget amendment for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen. I'll turn that over to Sarah.
Okay, so in your packet, you have the list of budget amendments. Do I need to pull it up or are we okay?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Pull it up.
Oh, yeah, we're not. Okay. So most of our budget amendments are carryovers from prior years, projects that we have finished up and they went through and made sure that we had a budget available. They're down here at the bottom. I know this is a little. Sorry. So we've got the Economic Development Committee. They had a carryover of five hundred dollars. The South Meadows project.
Okay, can I, can I ask you about that?
Yes.
When were, did you check to see when all the contributions were made? Because I just wonder, were they all in previous year or what?
So the only one last year that was made was from the hospital, a five hundred dollars. And both Dave and I, and we've talked with Brian Hula about it. And the one that, are you thinking about the Central Bank donation?
I know, Central Bank.
I think that was in the year previously.
Herd City Village is one of them.
And that was just donated in this year. This fiscal year, fiscal year sixteen. So in fiscal year fifteen, there was only that one.
So, so did we reach back and bring any of those other contributions that came or they part of that or they, the one thousand that we had originally set, set up this? Can I understand what I mean? I think we raised what, fifteen? Okay, if you're okay.
Okay. Okay, I can look back at that and see what you had left and, okay. Okay. Um, let's see. So South Meadows was seventy-two thousand, carryover. The Park and PAC study, you want me to go through one by one? What's beneficial to you? I don't know. Yeah, I don't.
Go ahead to the public.
Okay. Um, the Park and PAC study was about seventy-eight hundred dollars. The municipal recreation grant, so we received fourteen thousand dollars, but we wanted to do something bigger than just fourteen thousand, so we decided to hold off in the role, two years into one. So that's why we're carrying that forward and I know there's a couple ideas that they have planned for that money.
We talked about the wagon park and the sign, the field sign. There's nothing to be doing that far here.
So that will be carried forward and rolled into the new money debris safety here. Maples is two thousand dollars. The cemetery road resurface is four thousand dollars. The float, we just had it redone, but we have to pay for it in different years because we don't have the budget to pay for all in one year. So that's money that was left over to pay for this portion for this year, six thousand dollars. Technology, fantastic. Um, I'll just keep going while we go over that. We still have the reservoir that we're still working on. We have ninety-four thousand dollars left in there. The water dedication, we're still buying rights, so we still have money left over from there that we need to carry forward. Sorry. I have that. Leftward technology. Um, there was.
Just to hide, I understand.
All right. And at the power plant, they had an intercooler upgrade that they needed sixty-eight thousand that they didn't have done. Our golf well improvement, there was two thousand dollars for that. Our seven eighty west project storm is going to carry over a hundred thousand dollars. And then they have to carry over fifty thousand dollars for land acquisitions, which is down by American Way.
We, we bought that community some property. And then there's a portion of one of the property we need to, to be able to secure, so we're talking.
Well, I'm down there.
So that, that storm budget is being carried over. Um, so that's all of our carryovers that we're carrying for.
I have a question. What, what is we gonna do on the picnic day?
For the.
We have the theater on the break and that'll help you get squared up and all that.
Well, we, we took the last billing out of the city budget and I think whatever else comes in, we'll try to handle it to the budget set.
On the siding, you mean?
Yeah.
All that and. On the break and stuff?
We're gonna try to make it with what we have. I think it's the point where if there's more, we don't, we run out, all that can happen. We're gonna try to do that.
I just want to make sure PPP gets the seat, the total amount of that.
Okay, so that was it for the carryovers. The Parks Department received a donation from the Scottish Festival for their parks, so that's, we increased our budget five hundred dollars. We increased, um, police personnel to cover the new officer that you guys approved last council meeting. And the way that we, um, covered the budget for that is we used the property tax increase that was approved. And then we also looked at prior year court revenue and it was under budgeted, so we increased our court revenue to cover that. And then also golf, they had an air conditioner that went out. So they have eighty-four hundred dollars that they need to fix that air conditioner. And then they need to take, move a thirty hour employee to forty hour. Time. Almost over our budget.
Okay.
Any questions?
Uh, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public if there is anybody would like to come up. Yeah, seeing none, we'll go ahead and pause the motion. We got a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second? We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Paws? Okay, do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to recruit budget amendments as presented.
Okay, we got a motion. We have a second. Got a motion in a second. All those, who else? Do we have any discussion? Do we need roll call? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. All right, next thing on the agenda is the proclamation declaring that September seventeenth to the twenty-third is constitutionally. And I will go ahead and just read the proclamation. This is the con, whereas the constitutionally, the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of the limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September sixth, seventeen, two thousand fifteen marks the two hundred twenty-eighth anniversary of the framing of the constitution in the United States of America by the constitutional convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord, to record official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees that the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitutionally. Now therefore, I rate more by the virtue and authority vested in me as mayor of Payson City, Utah, do hereby proclaim September, the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitutionally. We ask our citizens to refrain from the ideals, deals the farmers of the constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through this guardian of our liberties. So do we have a motion? Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Paws? Okay. Next thing is a resolution adopting a flexible spending benefit plan. I'll turn that over to Dave.
And Mayor and council, this is real quick. We, the, the city's operated a flexible spending account that, that's qualified by the IRS for many years. They sent the thing in July. We signed it. And then, then they came back and said, oh, we need a resolution from the governing body, so it's just a resolution approving the section one twenty-five flexible benefits plan that the city has in place.
Okay. We have any discussion? A motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution number what?
Nine sixteen fifteen.
And authorize.
Now, is that A or B? That would be A, wouldn't it?
B.
B, okay.
Proving that the Payson City IRS section twenty-five flexible benefits plan and authorize mayor to sign.
Okay, we, we have a second. We have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Paws? Okay, motion carries. Next thing is resolution menuing the hidden drill development agreement. Dave?
Yes, Mayor and council, um, just came, this, last time this came before you, it was in I think April two thousand fourteen. And if you look here, this was, this is the part of the subdivision and there's a triangle piece over here on the other side of the road. I'll pull that up in a minute, but there's, there's a requirement, there's wrought iron fencing all along the backs of these houses where the trail is. And back in April two thousand fourteen, this little, oh my, things going dead, this little triangle piece right here. That, um, the council approved changing the requirement from wrought iron fence to tan vinyl fencing there. But nothing was discussed on this triangle piece over here. That triangle piece over here is, I'll show you that one. This is that other triangle piece that you have the. So this neebel look, that's Sixty East. And, and back in April, the council talked, I said, I took the minutes in your packet, but there was a question of not having access on the Sixty East here. But there was a, a wooden fence along there. Jalen, I think your comment was, I think the wooden fence, fine. Larry, your comment was, but if it ever comes down, you need to replace that with a wrought iron fence along Sixty East. But there was, there was some. Oh, sorry, is there another one? But there, the, the agreement didn't really talk about the other, this canyon road. And so the issue that has come up is whether to allow the, the tan fencing along here. And, uh, an individual bought this one here, this home thirty. And they also bought lot twenty-nine. They don't want to build a house there to have more lot. And so the requirement, the default of not having different kind of fencing, that put wrought iron all the way around. I can't keep that button closed. All the way around here. So we're proposing that the, the development agreement be amended to allow the tan vinyl fencing on this, this piece on the other side of the road. The wrought iron was mostly for the, the trail inside. There's also, there's also part of the development agreement says you can't put a fence on the front setback of any of the homes. That causes a problem, this lot twenty-nine, because there's a home here, but there's no home here. But if you, uh, if you have to stay back where the home is, it kind of cuts that property in half. It doesn't allow you to utilize the fencing. So in the agreement, we proposed that just for this lot only, that, that, that requirement, they could, they could encroach in the front setback and put the fence along here and down along the back. They wanted to, they wanted to just fence that property, make it part of the home.
So it's just that.
Just that corner line. And it's really not much of an issue because most of the how homes are already built. And they've already all been in there on the other side. So I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we, we exempted this property because it's not being used as a, as a home. The language I put in there is that if it ever, you know, it's ever sold as a, a lot in that, that requirement would be back in there. Dean, is Earth something that?
No, I just.
Thought we didn't address her?
No, and I picked it, we didn't really, it was originally dressed on those ones and talking about the park four door and obviously trying to match the, the green ridge and which we were happy to do. One of the things that happened with this too, if you remember right, is it was recorded and everything was done at seven lots. And then there was a little verbiage in there about the fault line and nobody could ever find and that was. So you ended up with these lots, there's three less lots and the one lot, like thirty-three is an acre. A lot of these are thirds or quarters, you know, they're a lot because of these bigger lots.
We lost a few lots, you lost a few lots based on the fault line.
Yeah, there was three lots gone. Be pretty hard to put that kind of bill on somebody that, I just can't see it happening and you know, we thought we should address it now. We didn't really address it before.
Put the wrought iron fencing around those bigger lots.
I guess I thought the wrought iron was always in the concrete area. That's what you talked about there.
It was, and like I say, back in April, the, the, the proposal was on this side, access, and there was a, a wood fence along there. But I think, Larry, your comment was, I think I made the motion is it's okay to lead that, but if that fence ever comes down, replace it with wrought along the Sixties.
That's what, what the question was, is, is that the corridor, what you see as you drive up the canyon, was, was discussion along that road, what to do with that? And kind of bounce back and forth. the corridor, what you see as you drive up the canyon, was, was discussion along that road, what to do with that? And kind of bounced back and forth. We never really addressed the rest.
We didn't address this one, here on Canyon Road.
Do we have any?
Although it's much passion in your eye, I think you're letting me copy this.
Larry? Do we have a motion?
Y'all make the motion. I'll approve the, in move amendment to the, the, the.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paws? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next thing is the MS four annual storm rating report.
So who did the bad, they can pay up?
This is, this almost as exciting as the, uh,
Who did the bad?
Huh?
I'm sure you guys will go into those eighty-eight pages or whatever. That's what's hard to read, work, work. I'm sure it is. No, it's just another one of those things that the state, you know, requires us to do an annual report every year. We did one last year. So we, we've updated our ordinance and such things. So that was why it was as long as it was, but we just have to tell them kind of what your subdivisions have happened, how many inspections we've done, that kind of stuff. So I just goes through, it's required. So we just have to have the mayor sign that. So we're just kind of basically following the procedure to approve the mayor's assignments. Unless you have any questions.
I have a question. I, I feel like when someone's going to build an house in a rectory, they call according to the MS four, it's a little for them to place dirt on the sidewalk and the gutter, is it not?
It is.
So.
Well, we're supposed to address it, yes, but, you know, there are maybe.
So is that to our building inspector or to our storm guard guy?
To, to Jesse first. So if we know about it, we go and address it and we go on and tell them they've got to move that stuff. It's just one of those, another one of those requirements because if it washes down into the storm rating.
I know, I can see it. I can see it. And I've done a hundred little bit on this thing anyway, but if we got it, you might as well report it.
So we do, I mean, if we know about it, we do go and, we do go and address it.
Okay, do we have any more discussion or a motion?
No, we have the approved MS four.
Second.
Annual report.
Do you have to sign it?
And, uh,
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Paws? Okay, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Motion adjourned.